I call the meeting of Carson City Planning Commission, May 24th to order. Secretary, call the roll, please.
Chair Bruce S. Wein.
Here.
Vice Chair Borders.
Here.
Commissioner Mondroy. I mean Vice Chair Sattler.
Here.
Commissioner Borders.
Here.
Commissioner Green. Commissioner Mondroy. Commissioner Owens. Commissioner Salerno.
Here.
A quorum's present.
We have a quorum, okay.
I wasn't trying to take your place.
(laughing) Mr. Borders, could you lead this in the pledge?
Could you rise for the pledge, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the pledge to our nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item B on the agenda is public comment. The public is invited at this time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the planning commission, including any matter that is not specifically included on the agenda as an action item. So is there anyone here who wants to discuss something that isn't on the agenda? Okay, we'll move on to item C for possible action approval of minutes. Do we have the minutes?
No, those will be at your next question.
Item D is modification of the agenda. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and the public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. Any modifications, Mr. Plemmel?
No.
Okay. Item E, disclosures. Any member of the commission may wish to explain any contact with an applicant or the public regarding an item on the agenda or business of the commission. Any disclosures?
No.
Seeing none, we'll move on to the public hearing. Item F. F1 is SUP-17-051 for possible action. To consider a request for a special use permit from Carson City, property owner Carson City, to allow a bus terminal on property zone Public Regional located at 3770 Budai Way, APN 010-037-02. Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant is seeking a special use permit for a bus terminal. I have on the screen the location of the property. The special use permit is required because the property is zoned Public Regional. All the uses in our Public Regional zoning are conditional uses and subject to a special use permit. I have the zoning map up on the screen, and you'll see that this is on Budai Way, and all of the property along Budai Way is zoned Public Regional. In fact, the corporate yard where this function currently exists is right across the street. The subject property is 5.25 acres and is the location of the old animal shelter. They'll be retaining the existing office building, which is 1,800 square feet, and utilizing that for the jack office function, which will include dispatch and a break area for the bus drivers. They're proposing hours of operation Monday through Friday, 5:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Saturdays, 7:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Sundays for special events. There will be parking for 16 buses and 45 passenger vehicles. The buses will not be serviced on-site, much to Graham's disappointment. He'll have to bring his buses across the street for servicing. So the surrounding uses are to the north of office building primarily. Sorry, to the north is the office building, and there is a single-family house, but the way they've designed their parking and the site plan's up so you can see the adjacent uses, they have not put parking adjacent to the property line where the houses are. The parking has been focused either offset from the property line or behind the office building. To the east and across the street on Fairview are industrial buildings. To the west is vacant, and to the south is the city corporate yard. As the commission knows, when you consider a special use permit, you have to consider seven findings of fact and make those findings in the affirmative. Staff has reviewed those findings in the staff report, and subject to the conditions of approval, we have made those findings in the affirmative, and we are recommending approval with conditions based on the ability to make the findings. Graham Dollarhide, who is the manager of the jack bus system, and Rob Fellows, who's the engineer who was responsible for the design work on this project, are both present and available to answer questions. And with that, I'll answer any questions that the commission has.
Any questions for staff? Mr. Fellows, do you have anything to add to the?
I don't.
Is there anyone from the public here to address this item? Okay. Since there doesn't appear to be anyone who wished to speak on this item, I'll bring it back to the commission for consideration. Any comments, any?
I'm the commission.
Okay, well.
I move to approve SUP-17-051, a request from Carson City, property owner Carson City, for a special use permit to allow a bus terminal on property zone Public Regional and located at 3770 Budai Way, APN 010-037-02, based on the ability to make the required findings. And the affirmative is stated in the staff report and subject to conditions of approval. Did we ask if they accepted all the conditions? (laughing) Hold a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and you have a nod from the city that they accept the conditions.
Sure.
Yeah, I think that this is, given that the city corporate yard is right across the street, this is an appropriate use for that property, and I would concur that the findings could all be made in the affirmative. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have four ayes, two absent, and one vacancy. Moving on to item F2. SUP-17-032 for possible action. To consider a request for a special use permit from Gold Dust Carson City LLC, property owners Gold Dust Carson City LLC and Propco Carson LLC, to allow a freeway-oriented sign on property zone General Commercial and Multifamily Apartment located at East Williams Street and 2171 East Williams Street, APN 008-152-25 and -26. Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant is seeking a special use permit for a 57-foot, 6-inch-tall, 519.79-square-foot freeway-oriented sign. The subject property is in the General Commercial and Multifamily Apartment zoning district. I have the zoning map up on the screen. The sign is proposed to be located in a planter area -- whoops, okay, there we go. The sign is proposed to be located in a parking area planter west of the freeway. Per the standards, the nearest residentially-zoned land must be 10 times farther away from the sign than the sign height, but as we'll see, the subject property includes residential zoning. That area of the multifamily apartment zoning that's on-site is utilized as an RV park, and there's not a plan at this point to change that. It's just, that's what it is. The planning commission does have the authority to approve modifications to the standards when the modifications or alternatives are consistent with the intent of the standards. So in this case, you have an application that essentially violates the standards. The sign is not 10 times -- the residential zoning is not 10 times farther away from the sign than the height of the sign. So to address this, the applicant is proposing to remove the 40-foot-tall sign that's currently located along Williams Street and is 356 square feet, and replace it with a 16-foot-tall 15 -- and this is a picture of the proposed 16-foot tall sign.
That's the bigger one.
No, that's the 16-foot one, it should be. Oh, that's 57, sorry. There's 16-foot one. The applicant's proposing to replace it with a 16-foot 5 and 5/8-inch sign, which would be 68.02 square feet in sign area. Staff does find this mitigation to be sufficient and has included a condition that the 40-foot sign has to be removed before the freeway-oriented sign can be lit up, so as to ensure it actually happens in timely manner, the mitigation. Also, as part of the application and the requirements of the code, the applicant had to prepare photo simulations of the sign at four different heights to demonstrate the visibility of the sign from the freeway. In reviewing the photo simulations, what I have up on the screen is the photo simulation at 47 and 1/2 feet tall. Staff's opinion is it's visible at that height, and across the street, you'll recall Golden Gate Petroleum just got approval at 47 feet as well. The applicant is proposing 45 feet, because we think it will be visible at 45 feet, and there's not a need to go up to 57 feet. Again, this is a request for a special use permit, and there are seven required findings of fact with the conditions, and that would be that they do remove the 40-foot-tall sign and replace it with a 16-foot sign prior to lighting up the freeway sign, and that the height of the freeway sign now exceed 45 feet, as well as some other conditions of approval. Staff was able to make the findings in the affirmative, and we are recommending approval. Jonathan Bowler, who's the general manager of Gold Dust West, is present, and Mark Stevens of Yesco, which is the sign company, and they do have a presentation. I'm happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Mr. Sattler.
Will both these signs be digital, the 16-foot end? I believe they will, correct?
Correct. I have pictures I can put up on the screen. Just froze. Okay, hold on. Okay, yes, they'll both have an electronic sign component. And actually, I added an additional condition, which isn't from the code, that there could be no audio, because I was concerned with the 16-foot one and the sidewalks there, that there would be potential for audio, given the graphics that were shown on the sign.
And do we know how far this sign is from the 40-foot sign that's presently there? And I imagine not being used for the freeway because it directional, it points more north or east and west.
Okay. You have a site plan in your packet. I'll find the page for you, which is probably the best source of information.
Oh, okay, I see it. Thank you.
Okay, so it would be, on the plan set, it's SP1, and that shows where the 40-foot sign is existing. It's delineated as a monument sign 1, and that would be replaced with a 16-foot sign, and the pylon sign would be in a planter area in the parking area.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Mr. Borders.
In the recommendations for conditions for approval, there's several items relating to how the sign flashes, and it's in accordance with our new code. The old sign, which is now going to become 16 feet, is not part of that code as present. How do we make it part of the code as we go forward?
The 40-foot sign is not -- was put up prior to code. It will be removed. It will be a demolition. So think of it as a building. If you demolish a building and you build a new building, you build the new building to current code.
Well, where are the conditions that the new sign meet all these requirements?
It would be done, but we can certainly add a condition of approval saying that the 16-foot sign shall meet all of the display conditions assigned to the 40-foot-tall sign.
Okay.
And I can draft that for the commission's consideration.
I would like to see that.
Would the applicant like to make their presentation? So if you would please identify yourselves and -- and actually, before you start, you've received the staff report.
We have.
And are in agreement with the conditions of approval?
Almost.
Almost, okay.
Almost.
All right.
Mark Stevens with Yesco, my associate Adam Kiefer, and Mr. Bowler from Gold Dust West. We do have a slideshow, and I'll answer a few of those questions. I think both of those that you each brought up, we'll take a crack at. But first, I'd like Jonathan to speak a little bit about what his view and future and look at the sign would be as the applicant.
Let's get this fired up real quick.
Yeah.
Good morning, everyone. First, I want to -- oh, sorry.
Sorry, are we able to get the PowerPoint presentation?
I'm getting it. Excuse me. I'm not. Just. Okay, good morning, everyone. Jonathan Bowler with Gold Dust West. First, I want to start off by thanking Hope for assisting with this process. I've learned more about, a little bit about your world in planning and a lot about signs, but not enough to present what these guys are going to present, so. But I have a greater appreciation for what you guys do. I just want to take just a brief moment to talk about our position with the sign. Obviously, when the approval came through about the freeway bypass, we started asking about the number of vehicles that would pass through Williams Street intersection, and I don't know if this is true or not, Patrick maybe will confirm this, but I believe once the bypass is through, that would be one of the busiest, if not the busiest intersection in Carson City. So obviously, we wanted to be able to take advantage of that and advertise to motorists driving by that particular intersection. And so our thought process was, I know it was a condition of approval, but when we started thinking about how we wanted to present our signs, we had thought about the 40-foot sign that's out there now and how, number one, that would not be effective driving through the freeway. And actually, if you think about it, it might be even a little bit unsafe, because you really have to stretch to see that sign when you're driving at that speed on the highway. The other thing is, I also share as, serve as chair of the visitors bureau, and I know there's a lot of talk about, rightfully so, about the sensitivity of freeway clutter signs and how we present ourselves. So we certainly wanted to do our part in making sure that we did not contribute to that. So part of our process was having a street-level sign, and we'll make sure that it complies with all the regulations and landscaping and all the things that are required there. We'll make sure it's a nice-looking sign. But I wanted to say that was part of our conversation as well. The other part is even though we'll be advertising Gold Dust West and messaging for Gold Dust West, there are a lot of businesses on the intersection that will also benefit from our presentation, just as when the mall across the street did upgrades, and Dunkin' Donuts moved in, and 99 Cent store moved in, that created more traffic on the intersection. Our advertising will also create more traffic on the intersection. And again, there's lots of reasons to pull off there, not just for Gold Dust West, but gas, food, car washes, banks. So it's really important that I think that we keep that intersection advertised, because it won't, again, it won't be just us benefiting. The other thing, the last point I'd like to make is, from the community standpoint, one of the things that we've prided ourselves on is we understand that we have a big responsibility for the community. We've partnered with schools, with Mark Twain School. We know we have schools that are next to us, or some of the poor schools in Carson City. So we've partnered with schools, we've partnered with organizations, Boys and Girls Club. We will always be a strong presence in the community, because we need to give back to the community that we operate in. And if you check our record, I think you'll find that to be so. But that also involves messaging. It's not just about donations and about some of the things that we give to the businesses and to the organizations that are working to support our community, but we also feel a strong responsibility to message to our residents. And as example of that, last year, we did flood awareness, which obviously was very appropriate. We'd have a flood awareness message. We did, most recently, a National Association of Letter Carriers when they were doing their food drive, and probably one of the most ones that we do every year for Veterans Day, to thank those that served our country for a 24-hour period. We left a message up thanking our veterans, and as we've done every year, offer them a free meal to come in for that particular day. That's a big part of responsibility, and we're excited about not just our particular business, but we're also excited about the fact that we have a special opportunity and a unique opportunity to be able to talk to all those folks from a community perspective. And so Mike Jones, who's actually the general manager of Carson City, has been on for three months. I'm the vice president of Devade Operations. I was the general manager there for the past eight years, and that was a big part of what we do. So we're always looking for opportunities, a way in which we can communicate with folks about what's important in the community, and that's not going to change, and we have the opportunity to reach more of those motorists. Hope had brought up about RV, the residential zoning. We own that RV park. It is a transient RV park. I came onboard in Gold Dust West in September of 2008. I think when Pinion Plaza had it, it was always an RV park, and as of right now, it would always remain an RV park. You know, we liked the RV park business. It's, you know, it's pretty good right now, and we plan to keep it that way. So I just wanted to share some of you, with you, some of our thoughts on why we wanted the sign, what we intend to do with it, and I know these guys are going to present on the specifications, but you can be assured it's going to be done professionally, it's going to be done right. We're going to have, hopefully, one of the best-looking, two of the best-looking signs in Carson City, and we want to make sure, we know that we have a responsibility to make sure that it looks sharp and in keeping with the direction that you guys are going in. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's talk about the sign itself. We designed the sign to conform to what code allows in both height and square footage. 30 feet above the Jersey wall, less than 600 square feet overall. 50% of the sign to be the EMC, which is the digital display, all standard in what we've designed with. If we go to the next slide, we've already looked at the site plan, but you can see there, that's the distance, and roughly, I think it's about 400 feet. Is that right? In that neighborhood between the two signs. One of them faces north and south, the other one east and west, so now you got it. In the new sign program, based on what Jonathan said about traffic patterns, removing the existing pylon sign on Williams Street and replacing with a smaller monument sign, it's from 40 feet to 16 feet six, which absolutely will help reduce the clutter. I believe that big 40-footer was an SUP approval in 1995. That's how that thing got there, and it's been running the way it runs since then. But this new monument sign, much smaller, and it's designed for the traffic going down Williams Street. Eye level, we're not trying to reach the folks coming in from Dayton any longer, we're just trying to talk to the community in the intersection there. And that's what that existing sign looks like today and what it will look like in the future. It's quite a dramatic difference. Okay, the freeway sign, you can see there, right up against the parking lot to the east of the property. This shows the design at 57 feet.
Six inches.
Six inches, correct, which is what code both says. At 30 feet above the Jersey wall, we're allowed to have 50% of that being the digital display. After reviewing staff's report and going to 45 feet, go ahead.
And I just wanted to add one thing about the sign when we created, designed this one. I know you guys had looked at Golden Gate Petroleum and Maverick signs, which are more of a rectangular cabinet on top of a stick. When we did that, as Jonathan said, you know, they're trying to go with the highest quality, a great-looking sign. So you can see the dual-pole structure with the arch, a lot of little embellishments. I mean, this really went in to tie in well with the building and put up a sign that, you know, this looks presentable, not a popsicle stick. So you can see how that's what we designed it for, and -- go ahead and take it away,
So at 45 feet, in order for us to still have the functionality of the digital display, we're going to have to move it up and move Hotel Casino lower and chop the legs off of that thing and really do a squatty little body there. And in fact, maybe even go to a single pole and just do a pole cover around it. We haven't gotten that far yet, but at 45 feet, it kind of defeats the purpose of a freeway pylon sign. The next slide here, you can, well, it's kind of hard to see, but the highest freeway improvement, which is the Jersey wall, is the red line that's about a foot below the message center at 22 or 27 feet nine inches. So by cutting the sign down to 45 feet, in essence, we're going to lose 3/4. Now, you can still see the sign from the freeway, but what we've proposed to -- Now, you can still see the sign from the freeway, but what we've proposed to what was, what staff was talking about, it's significant, and for the investment that they're willing to make in the property, it's something I think we should all talk about.
And as Mark said, as that Jersey wall being the highway, highest freeway improvement, now, you can see because you're looking downward at the sign on the freeway, so that not being an issue. But that being said, as we read through the regulations, you're allowed to 30 feet above the highway improvement. In my mind, that meant to be able, so motorists could plainly see at a glance that the sign is eye level with them, not be looking downward at it. So that was a major factor because it does clearly take out most of the message center, and, you know, that's even with us moving that up on the sign to try to accommodate the 45 feet. You can see we're still coming up pretty short there. Now, in looking at the 45 feet, like we said, we have no issues with any other conditions on that. The height-wise, we'd like to have it a little bit higher, hopefully, maybe to even just get the message center above that Jersey wall. But other than that, everything we comply with in the code, the conditions, that was our one thing.
And to Mr. Borders' comment earlier about the sign is equipped with an auto-dimming function for nighttime viewing. It's done in the sign as ambient light on, comes and goes, cloudy, thunderstorm, what have you, and it will comply with the regulation for digital signs, including whole times, change sequence, and animation. What code specifically says is what the sign will specifically do. It's also capable of emergency alerts and amber alerts to get the message out on the highway. And that's about it, and really, I guess what it comes down to is the height that we all are happy with at this point, from what we designed.
And what is that height?
57 feet is what we're proposing. Staff recommended coming back at 45. Maybe we meet somewhere in the middle and all go home happy. It's whatever, that's why we're here, is mainly that issue.
Okay, I just wanted to know what...
Between 57 and 45 is the sweet spot.
Okay, Mr. Sadler.
What you mentioned to get the bottom with the reset with the casino below, what's it take to get the reader level or whatever?
Looks like that would be about six feet.
About another six.
So roughly 52 feet overall height.
To get that level.
Correct.
Is there any consideration, and I think I've answered my own question of using the existing and maybe a T thing to where you could see it coming the other direction, but I imagine where you're putting it, it stands more alone, so it's more visible.
It is, and that would be a Planning Department nightmare, I think, trying to calculate square footage with two message, two independent units, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Borders, you had a question?
I didn't have a problem with the new sign. My question was with the old sign, as far as whether it was grandfathered or not. It's obviously not, so I'm happy.
It's going away.
Okay, and the design looks really nice. I think that the problem that we have all had is everybody's got a really good reason why they want to jack it up a little bit higher.
For sure.
And I appreciate what you said about highway clutter and being a good citizen. So we're trying to find that happy medium, wherever that is, so that we don't end up with the sign creep.
Yeah, and we don't want...
And you know, every time we approve one, Hope says, "That's the last one you're going to see," and then next week, there's a new one.
Sure. Actually, if I can add to that, it's not just clutter, but if we, if you, you can see the existing William Street sign from the freeway, but it really, when we drove it, it really creates, I think, a safety issue because you really have to, you're past the exit, and you'd really have to turn your head at going at 70 miles an hour, and that's probably kind for some folks, to try to read that. So we really felt that it was important that we didn't have that sign there as well.
Can you actually see the new sign prior to the exit for William Street?
No.
Yeah, because there's a curve there.
There's a curve in the sound wall.
And a rise.
Yeah, you cannot.
Okay, so you're, I guess you're going to get some people coming from the south. I mean, they'll be able to see it. And the photo simulations show the photo simulation from the north, which is probably the most restrictive view. Coming from the south to 45 foot is probably pretty adequate, isn't it?
Actually, from the south, it's less of a read because of the distance, and you're farther down below the freeway, you know?
Freeway drop.
It does.
Yeah, and the submittals asked that we show it from the northbound, that it's correct. It wasn't. The submittal required that we show the simulations from northbound only, even though, yeah, we would have liked to show it because the, I'm sorry, the northbound is further away would have been a nicer.
So visibility is less from the southbound lane? Because the, because the sign is lower and the freeway is lower?
And it's closer, exactly.
Mr. Sadler.
The simulation with 47.6 from the north, it's still, the whole sign is well-visible above the wall. But the problem we have too is, I believe, the last one with petroleum, wanted 50, 60 feet or something, and it's, I can't remember the exact height, but we knocked them down considerably as well. So I think that's probably possibly why staff is trying to be more consistent with the sign height in the area, so.
What was the Golden West sign height?
I believe that was 47. If I may, Mr. Chair, I want to articulate for the commission what the code says because the code doesn't simply say you're allowed to be 30 feet above the highway. That's a portion of it, but not the entirety. What the code says is, the height of the sign should be no higher than reasonably necessary in order for the sign copy to be visible from a vehicle approaching on the same side of the freeway as determined by a line of sight analysis, and in no case more than 30 feet above the highest freeway improvement immediately adjacent to the proposed sign, including freeway barriers and sound walls, excluding light fixtures and sign structures. So the guidance of the code says we absolutely want that sign to be visible, and, but we don't want it to be taller than necessary. And in the commission's past discussions, I think there's sort of been the conversation that the height, looking at height was more important than looking at sign size. So, but I think the code gives us that guidance, so I just wanted to offer that clarification.
Thank you for that. So the Golden, or the Golden West Petroleum is 47 feet?
Right.
Okay.
Hi, everyone.
Go ahead.
Good morning, Lee Plamell, Community Development Director. Just being the only one that was around at the time of this, when this was adopted, I've just heard some comments about sign clutter. So just to remind everybody, kind of the purpose of this ordinance, even to allow sign-oriented freeways along specific properties, there's limitations on it. You have to have a certain size with basically the intent is to, the overall intent is actually to reduce sign clutter, so that individual properties, and I think it goes back to the Maverick, individual properties don't put up signs, five signs to compete. They combine those properties together into one size sign to reduce sign clutter. So there is a, there is a limit, this isn't probably going to be the last one, but there is a limit on the number. It was kind of basically designed so that at William Street and College Parkway, you may have one on each corner, and that's it because of the size and distance and other limitations. So I just wanted to mention that, and this isn't to counter anything that's been said or talk about this sign, but remember, the overall purpose is in large part actually to reduce sign clutter and combine it, signage onto one sign.
Thank you for that clarification. Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to address this item? Okay. Pardon me?
Just before the commission starts its dialogue, I will be recommending a replacement condition based on Commission Borders' comments that replaces conditions eight through 12 with a condition that states both the 40-foot, 45-foot sign or whatever it ends up being, and the 16-foot sign shall comply with the provisions of 4.6.6 of the Carson City Development Standards. So we'll make sure that both signs are referenced, and we just can default to the code as opposed to having to call them out.
Okay, thank you.
And we did intend to comply with that, they have no problem with that condition. Yeah, and the message center. And just one last thing, as we were driving in today and we saw Maverick sign, you know that one a little more unique, you could see it pop up right over the Jersey wall. But just one more time to reiterate, I know we're saying, you know, why this company deserves higher than the other one, and our main thing with that is, we've designed a sign that's different than those other ones that are on a single pole with a rectangle box at the top. Ours is very much more of a stacked layout, and we are set back, you know, a bit further than both the Maverick and the Golden Gate appear on there. So, you know, that height, the, you know, for the driver to be able to see it at a glance was big to us. So that's why we went into, you know, designing something that looked like this, but also trying to reach a height where the entire sign should be able to be read easily.
Okay. Mr. Sadler.
Keep in mind, with, I believe, with the Golden Gate sign, that you're representing three sections of property, and we're going to put up to five businesses on that same sign. So they're kind of doing the same thing, less clutter, one sign, five businesses, so we can appreciate that as well. I just, looking at your shot from the 1,000 feet with the 47.6, I just think it's pretty readable from there. So that's just my opinion.
Okay. I think that given the fact that we made, that we held Golden West Petroleum to a limit of 47.6, I think that it would be reasonable to hold you to that same, that same limit. And I think that, you know, since you have the Gold Dust West at the very top of the sign, that's really what you're advertising, and the other stuff is informational. I think that the Gold Dust West piece of it is very visible regardless of what height the sign is at. So I would propose that we go with the 47.6 as an alternative to the 45 feet. Mr. Sadler.
In addition to that too, in the, I really think by moving your reader board like you did up and putting the casino hotel underneath will actually enhance the Gold Dust West because, you know, well, that's going to be the only thing on the top. You're going to see that jump out at you, then instead of the tan casino hotel, you have your reader board with the casino underneath. I think will actually stand out even more in that design.
Okay, are there any other, Mr. Solano?
I agree with the chairman. I think that we ought to abide by the other sign that was recently approved. I think that a 47 and 1/2-foot sign looks good. I think you can see it from the freeway, and I also recognize the fact that they're reducing the other sign as much as they are to bring it down to street level, which is more realistic, and I think that that's an improvement to the overall sight as well. So I would be inclined to be in favor of a 47 and 1/2-foot sign.
Me too.
Okay, well, if there's no further comment from the public or the applicant or the staff, we will, I would consider a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve SUP-17-032, a request by Gold Dust Carson City LLC, property owner Gold Dust Carson City LLC and Propco Carson LLC for a special use permit to allow freeway-oriented sign on property zoned, general commercial and multifamily apartment located at 2171 East William Street, APN 00815225 and 26, based on the findings and subjects to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report with item numbers five being amended to 47 and 1/2 feet and the other requirement that Hope gave us for...
I'll read it for the benefit of the record. To replace conditions eight through 12 with a condition that states both the 47-foot six-inch sign and the 16-inch, or 16-foot sign shall comply with the provisions of 4.6.6 of the Carson City Development Standards.
That's my motion.
With all that said, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'd just like to reiterate that the findings are, can all be made in the affirmative, and we have agreement from the applicant that the conditions are suitable. And with that, I'll ask for the vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Two? Absent? One? Seat vacant? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to item F3, SUP-17-042 for possible action, to consider a request for a special use permit from Randall T. and Julie A. Atkins to allow an accessory structure that exceeds 75% of the size of the primary structure and exceeds 5% of the parcel size on property zoned, single-family, one acre, located at 1393 Kuntz Lane, APN 009-332-07.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. The subject property is located in a portion of the town with larger lots and outdoor shop buildings. The slide I put up on the screen shows you an outline of the area, and you can see the number of outbuildings associated with the primary structures in this neighborhood. Because the size of the shop is proposed to be more than 75% of the size of the primary building and more than, cover more than 5% of the lot, it is subject to a special use permit. The Planning Commission is authorized to issue the special use permit upon making each of the seven findings of fact in the affirmative. Staff has been able to make those findings in the affirmative, subject to conditions of approval. We are recommending approval, and the Atkins are present and available to explain their project a little more. I'm happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Any questions for staff at this time? Okay, would the applicant like to explain their project to us? Please step up to the microphone, please.
We just want it for less clutter, you know?
Identify...
I'm Randy, I can...
Okay.
Yeah, we got a two-car garage that's full, you know, and I got, I kind of like to collect classic cars and, so, you know, we don't want the land of the tarps there, so we're looking to put an outbuilding, so.
It's a very attractive outbuilding as well. I think the design and that is very nice as well. I was just over in that area, and I've always admired your truck you have sitting out front.
A lot of people like that, yeah.
Anyway, but I think it's a very nice building for the area.
Yeah, I don't want it too tall, you know, but we want to be able to pull an RV in it, so it worked out pretty good.
Mr. Borders, you have a question?
One of the staff requirements is for a relocation of a fire hydrant.
Yeah, the fire marshal got ahold of us, and he had sent somebody over. We're actually okay where it's at, but we agreed to move it up 30 feet, so that would be well within the limits of it.
Okay, and you're going to have no water in that building at all? No hose bib outside? How are you going to wash all those classic cars?
Ah, well, we got a hose up front.
Okay.
And I like to, I noticed on page four, the consideration that it's not, you know, it's all in the backyard, which is really nice, because a lot of them over there are kind of next to it. It's for convenience and stuff, but I mean, the only one will be looking at that possibly would be you folks or your neighbors from the back.
Yeah, they won't be able to sit and let you get in your backyard, you know?
Okay, is there anyone from the public who wishes to address this item? Okay, well, I guess...
Good, all right, thank you.
So we didn't receive, we have no public comment received on this?
Correct. The, actually, Commissioner Borders brought up, the only concern that the staff had was regarding the hydrant. We were able to verify the building could be moved forward by 30 feet and comply with fire code. So we wanted to make sure we didn't bring forward something to you that wasn't feasible, and it is feasible with those conditions.
Thank you for that. Okay, well, if there aren't any further, Mr. Sadler.
I move to approve SUP-17-042, a special use permit request to allow a detached accessory structure that exceeds 75% of the size of the primary structure and exceeds 5%... exceeds five percent of the parcel size on property zone, single family, one acre, located at 1393 Kuntz Lane, APN 009-332-07, based on the findings and conditions of approval in the staff report.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Mr. Solano. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion passes four, in favor, two absent and one vacant. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on. Item F4, SUP-17-047 for possible action, to consider a request for a special use permit from Battleborn Autobody LLC, agent Morris Engineering Limited, property owner Bernard Family Trust, to allow an autobody repair facility on property zone, limited industrial, located at 2441 and 2445 Fairview Drive, APNs 010-063-03 and 04.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. As the chair identified, this is an application for a special use permit for an autobody facility in the limited industrial zoning district. The subject property is 12,197 square feet and located at the southwest corner of Fairview Drive in Edmonds. The property actually slopes down if you were able to visit the property from Edmonds, so it's lower than the road. I was actually so surprised to look at this property. It's pristine and the landscaping along Edmonds looks fantastic. So, I just complimented the applicant and they thought I was sarcastic, but I wasn't. It looks fantastic and I hope it stays that way. You do have a residential area across Edmonds Street and so I specifically went out to the site to try to understand the impacts that might be realized for those residents or to those residents. Because of the slope differential, the width of Edmonds, the level of traffic on Edmonds being an arterial, staff and the fact that the intent is to operate the autobody work within the building that's onsite, staff doesn't think that the, any traditional impacts from an industrial use like noise, fumes, things like that, will have any impact on that residential area. So, that was the one concern I really had going out to the site and I really feel it's, there's not going to be an impact that would require mitigation. Having said that, this is a request for a special use permit. You do need to look at the seven required findings of fact and be able to make those in the affirmative. Staff has reviewed those in the staff report and made them in the affirmative, subject to conditions of approval. Peter Sadab Singh, who will be the operator of the autobody, and Harold Morris, the engineer, are present and happy to speak with you, but staff is recommending approval and I'm happy to take questions.
Okay, I have a question. This is a limited industrial zoning district. What are the permitted uses within a limited industrial zoning district?
materials, and a bottling plant, brewery facility, grinding and sharpening of tools. And then there's a fairly long list of uses that are conditional and it also picks up on all the uses that are allowed in the general commercial. So, if in going through the code, the use is allowed in general commercial, it would also be allowed in light industrial, although not specifically listed.
I was mostly interested in the other industrial, the limited industrial uses. Okay, thank you for that. Mr. Sattler.
If it wasn't for painting, they wouldn't even have to be here, correct? That's what I pick up on it because they're adding paint. Autobody is allowed there, or auto repair, but the painting and that changes it. Also, there was a mention, I can't remember, there's a mention about repairing large equipment was being done in that before. What was the business that was in there before?
I actually can't speak to that. I'm not familiar.
I know there were big trucks and stuff in there because I used to go home that way and stuff, but I'm just not sure. I think in here it mentioned something about they were doing large equipment repair as well in there before. Okay.
Mr. Solano.
I've noticed that the only driveway access to it is on a common use driveway. How does that affect this property? I guess it's something that's been established in the past and they have a mutual agreement with the adjacent property. Would you like to talk to that?
I'll talk briefly. I don't, I don't have a lot of in-depth knowledge. Having visited the site, I did observe that the access is from Edmonds and that there is almost like a, it seems, it's like a dirt access. It's not an official access on Fairview, which was interesting, but that, I don't think, I think that was probably just some maintenance or something. It wasn't, certainly wasn't the official access. And actually, staff did notice that the access was from Edmonds and you'll notice a condition of approval that notes that because the access is from Edmonds, the address will be, the property will be readdressed so that the 911 responders can find it more easily. But in terms of any type of access agreements or anything, I'm not familiar with that, but the applicant or his engineer may be.
And having gone, I live, I used to go that way all the time, going back and forth to home and stuff. They actually come outside the fenced area to a flat area. They have good visibility, then they pull out onto the road. It's not like pulling right out of a fenced area without the visibility.
Okay. Is the applicant here? Would you please step forward and...
Harold Morris with Morris Engineering. Peter Sadab Singh, owner.
So, can you, I guess for the owner, maybe explain a little bit about how the operation is going to happen? I mean, is everything going to be inside other than the storage of vehicles?
Yes, everything's done inside the facility. I mean, there shouldn't be anything other than parking outside.
And are there, are there regulations concerning odor emissions and vapors?
Yes, we will be buying all brand-new paint booths and dust collectors, everything like that. You know, we've bought vacuums for our DA Sanders, everything that will just keep dust down, dust and fumes and everything.
Okay. And I read in there, in the application where you are using water-based solvents rather, or water-based paint rather than solvent-based paint, is, does that reduce the volatile organic compound emissions?
It does. We try to comply, we're trying to stay ahead of it. We're doing everything that California rules as far as painting wise and they're more strict, so we're trying to stay ahead of the game just in case it comes this way.
Okay. Mr. Sattler.
By using that paint, I believe it says it cuts up to seventy-five, seventy-five percent of the, that the other paints use, and the only time you use that other would be on your final coat or clear coat at the end.
Primer, sealer and clear coat, I mean, and eventually it'll all switch over.
And that's all done sealed into a painting chamber and that's all air controlled, so nothing really escapes or gets out of it.
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant?
We agree to ours.
Yeah, and you've received the staff report and are in agreement with the conditions of approval?
Yes.
Okay. The, there is that rear exit gate on, right at the curve there on Edmonds. Is that going to be used at all?
Possibly. We're, I mean, I'm thinking, you know, for tow trucks, instead of having them come pull to the front, just open the gate for them to pull in that way to drop off cars versus trying to make that turn. I don't know. If it's not allowed, then I'll just block it off.
I guess I, can I ask a question of Mr. Pittenger?
Look over here. Leave you alone.
I guess, my question is, does that pose a hazard of any kind to be, to utilize that, that north entrance?
Yeah, yeah, I actually, we actually haven't studied it yet, as you may have imagined, but, but yes, off the cuff, I would be concerned about several things there, including site distance and, and just the lane configurations there. There isn't, there isn't a dedicated turn lane there, but like I said, we haven't actually had a traffic, traffic engineer look at that yet.
Okay, thank you for that. Mr. Solano.
I'd like to ask the applicant, do you have, do you have permission from the adjacent property owner to use that, that main driveway into the property?
It is a shared driveway, so I didn't...
The shared driveway?
Exactly.
You do have it?
They, that's what they were using before as far as going into the main office. The main office is on the south end, that big block, that little corn rectangular piece right there. That is the main office of what it was used for before, so they were sharing that same entrance.
Okay.
Just as a, you might want to take a look and see whether there's an agreement there.
Yeah, not a problem, yeah.
An easement of some sort, because you wouldn't want that, you wouldn't want that to be cut off and...
Exactly, okay.
But that's really not our concern. But I would, I would, I would recommend a condition that limits the use of that north entrance to, or even restrict it except for emergencies, something like that.
Mr. Chair, are you referring to the access point on Fairview?
The access point on the, on the curve at Edmonds there.
That's the normal access point.
That, that's the main access point.
I thought it was down here.
No, no.
No, the access point is at the curve on Edmonds and it actually has a pretty, pretty large pull-off. I'll let Stephen Potte speak to, to his comments on, on safety of the existing driveway, but that's the main point of access to the site.
Yeah, that's where they come out of the fence and...
But that's not a shared driveway. This is the shared access here. Can you bring up the site plan?
Yeah.
Commissioner, this is Stephen Potte, development engineer, while she's looking that up. So, I did look at that when we were reviewing the project and we have in our standards, minimum spacing for a driveway to an intersection, for a stop sign controlled intersection on an industrial street, it's eighty-five feet and that's roughly, I want to say, one hundred and thirty. I just measured that, so.
That's what he was just asking about.
Okay. Okay. So, I'm confused then as to where the primary access is. Because the, the site plan shows it as a shared access off of Edmonds between the two large buildings.
And this, the others called a rear?
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess to clarify, the shared access is more towards the bottom of the screen.
Mm-hmm.
That's, it's a steep downhill drop to get to the site and that's why with tow trucks, it would be more beneficial for them to come in the other way and that's how the heavy truck traffic came in. Where the cursor is, is the primary one that's actually right on the site and that's where they maneuvered for the backside a lot, but most of the...
This is primary, correct?
Correct.
And this is for the tow truck occasionally?
No, the other way around. The primary one's the one on the bottom of the screen.
Oh.
The front of the building's actually on that south property line.
This will be for the tow truck?
Yeah, occasional use, not for the majority of the traffic coming on the site. So, I'm not sure how many tow trucks, maybe you can speak to that.
It varies on accidents. I mean, can't control that.
Okay, I guess, I guess I wouldn't, as long as it's not the primary access, like, and it's only limited to, to specific uses, I guess I can live with that. Are there any other questions for the applicant? Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to address this item?
There was one letter.
We have one letter from a neighbor indicating concern about odors and potential noise, but I think that given that the operations will be within the, the structure and utilizing the required vapor controls and that, that unless, unless in the future some, some issue comes up, that I think that it's, I don't have a, I don't have any issues with this particular application. Any other comments from commission? Okay, thank you very much for your presentation. Bring it back to the commission for consideration. Mr. Solano.
I would like to move for approval. I move to approve SUP-17-047, a request from Battleborn Autobody LLC, property owner Bernard Hard, Bernhard Family Trust, agent Morris Engineering Limited, for a special use permit to allow an autobody repair facility on a property zone, limited industrial, located at 2441 and 2445 Fairview Drive, APNs 010-063-04 and, and 04, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
Okay, I'd just like to correct that motion. It's, oops, correct the motion. It's APN 03 and 04, not 04 and 04. Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I would like to, to state that I believe that the findings are, can all be made in the affirmative and given the, the potential for mitigation and of any noise and odor. So, we have a motion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, none. We have four, for the motion, two absent and one vacancy. Thank you. Item F5A, actually, I'm going to read three. We're going to deal with all of these together. We will vote on them separately, but I will read all three, or four. Four, isn't it?
One and three.
Three, I'm sorry. You're right. One's a zoning code amendment. Items F5A, F5B and F5C. F5A, ZMA-17-049 for possible action, to make a recommendation to the board of supervisors regarding a request from Nevada Builders Alliance, property owner Builders Association of Western Nevada, for a zoning map amendment, ZMA, to remove a resolution of intent on property zoned neighborhood business located at 806 Randell Drive, APN 009-072-01. Item F5B, SUP-17-050 for possible action, to consider a request for a special use permit from Nevada Builders Alliance, property owner Builders Association of Western Nevada, to allow a childcare facility on property zoned neighborhood business located at 806 Randell Drive. I won't read the APN again. And item F5C, VAR-17-054 for possible action, to consider a request for a variance from Nevada Builders Alliance, property owner Builders Association of Western Nevada, to allow for a reduction from four onsite parking spaces to one onsite parking space for a childcare facility on property zoned neighborhood business located at 806 Randell Drive. Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. In general, the... In general, the subject property is 8,276 square feet. Adjacent land uses and zoning are to the north, single-family residential use with a mobile home 6,000 zoning district. To the south, it's multifamily residential and single-family residential with a neighborhood business PUD zoning. To the west is the post office with neighborhood business zoning, and to the east is single-family residential zoned, a mobile home 6,000. The property has been used as an office since 2000 for the Builders Alliance, which I guess used to be called Build, Nevada Builders, it had a different name. Anyway, um, I want to speak first to the zoning map amendment, because this is, this is a little different. Okay, the existing zoning of this property is neighborhood business. So why are we looking at zoning map amendment? Because we're going to stay neighborhood business. The reason we're looking at zoning map amendment is in 2001, when the Board of Supervisors re-zoned the property from the mobile home 6,000 to neighborhood business, they did so with a resolution of intent. The resolution of intent, as best I can explain, it functioned a lot like the PUD. You'll recall when we have a PUD, that you start with your base zoning, and then the PUD can change the allowable uses, it can't add, but it can take away, and it can change your dimensional criteria. So in the case of this resolution of intent adopted in 2001, it included the following requirements. There was only one use allowed. The only use allowed, conditional use allowed, or accessory use allowed, was an office for the Builders Association of Western Nevada. Secondly, if the Builders Association were to sell, and this was in the resolution, is in the resolution of intent, if the Builders Association were to sell the property, it would be responsible for rezoning the property back to mobile home 6,000, and the structure could only be sold as a residence. Third, the structure is limited to one story in height. Four, there were some specific landscaping requirements along the eastern and northern property lines, which again are adjacent to the single-family residential. And five, there were some limitations put on signage. So it's, it's a really unusual instrument. Right now, if we were to consider having limitations similar, we would use the PUD process to get there, we wouldn't use a resolution of intent. The applicant is seeking to remove the resolution of intent, to essentially to remove the supplemental regulations, if you will, so that they would be subject to the regulations of the base zoning, which is neighborhood business. When you can, um, the method to get us there, as it's, again, it's just so unusual, but anyway, the method is a zoning map amendment. The resolution of intent was put into place through, through a resolution of intent, so to remove a resolution of intent, we need to go through the zoning map amendment process. The applicant's goal is to end up with the neighborhood business, which is on the map today, without a resolution of intent in effect. When you consider a zoning map amendment, you need to make three findings. You have to look for compliance with the master plan, compatibility with adjacent land uses, and ensure that the proposed zoning will not have the list of uses that would have a detrimental impact on other properties in the vicinity, and I included in your packet the list of allowable uses in the neighborhood business zoning district. And the third finding, that it won't negatively impact existing or planned public services or facilities, and it won't adversely impact public health, safety, and welfare. In terms of the master plan, and again, we already have that neighborhood business zoning, so this is a little tricky, but in terms of the master plan, the master plan tells us that we're seeking compact, efficient, patterned growth in a balanced land use. This designation is consistent with that. It's an already developed site. It's an infill area, and it's already served by pu, public services. The neighborhood, um, in terms of neighborhood compatibility, the neighborhood business zoning district is intended to provide services to a larger neighborhood within walking and biking distance, and is limited primarily to offices and retail sale of new merchandise. The intensity of any future use on this particular site would be limited to the, due to the size of the site and the ability to accommodate, um, parking. Staff finds that the scope of the use is allowed in the neighborhood business would be compatible with the adjacent land uses. And in terms of the public services and facilities finding, the site is already served by public services and facilities. So staff does find that we can make these three findings required for a zoning map amendment in the affirmative, and we are recommending approval. Moving on to the special use permit. The applicant is seeking, and this is dependent on a zoning map amendment, so should the Board of Supervisors not amend the zoning map to eliminate the resolution of intent, this special use permit can exist. It, it would be limited to the office use. And so I, we are bringing forward the special use permit to the Planning Commission, but there is a condition included that is dependent on the zoning map amendment. So the applicant did submit some late material where he modified, um, his proposal somewhat, and so what I'll do is review the modified proposal. The applicant is proposing a limit of 20 children, you originally saw an application for, I believe, 36 children. The applicant is proposing, uh, modified hours of 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM Monday through Friday, so he has proposed to eliminate any Saturday hours. And they're proposing limiting outdoor hours for the children playing outside to 8:00 AM to 5:30 PM, and the original application was 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The applicant has suggested a review in one year. The staff would suggest that, should the applicant want to revise the special use permit, the burden be on the applicant to come forward. I don't think the staff should, should automatically, when the calendar turns to, you know, 2018, set up a, a review for the Planning Commission. So I would suggest that would, that burden be placed on the applicant without a timeframe, like anyone else would do, and come in for revision to the special use permit. In large part, childcare facilities are regulated by the state, so you had some late material that was referencing a lot of the NRS and NAC and talking about bathrooms and cooking areas and, and sinks and things like that. The number of children allowed based on those facilities is something regulated by state agencies, the city doesn't regulate it. We're looking at land use, so it's, I almost feel like saying it's, it's, it's like a bar, but it's not. But essentially, if you decide this land use is okay, they still have to comply with the layer of regulations at the state level, in terms of the sanitation requirements, bathroom facilities, how many children are allowed, the ages of children, and so on. So given that, the staff has reviewed the seven required findings for a special use permit, and we have recommended conditions of approval. With those conditions of approval, the staff is able to make those findings in the affirmative. Third is the variance. This property is different. It's diff, first, the fact there's the resolution of intent makes it really different, in my opinion, because that's just a really unusual instrument, but it is neighborhood business. It was built as an office. It's next to the post office. If you drive down Randall Street, you'll see a wall, and across the street from that wall is multifamily residential that has onsite parking. So there is sufficient width on the right-of-way to accommodate on-street parking, but the, um, the need for that on-street parking adjacent to the post office is, appears fairly limited. The post office has sufficient parking to accommodate its customers in the front of the building. The back of the building is for the postal service vehicles or their employees, and so they don't have spillover onto the street. The applicant was required to construct the building to look like a residential building with the associated landscaping in the front, so the applicant is seeking to not have to pave his front yard, so to speak, to accommodate the parking onsite and to retain the landscaping. And they recognize that they do have this availability of on-street parking due to the post office being the neighboring use, specifically the parking lot, the back-of-house parking lot of the post office. So the applicant is proposing that the handicap space that's required be onsite, but that they obtain a variance to allow the off-site parking to occur on the street. There are three findings when you consider a variance. One, that there are special circumstances due to the shape, size, topography, and location of the property. Two, that the application is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of property rights. And three, that won't adversely impact the neighborhood. As I've already said, this location of this property is a bit unusual in that it is next to the very large post office, and in fact, the back-of-house parking area. So I think the parking on the street can be accommodated without having adverse impacts on the neighborhood. It would not involve parking in front of single-family homes. It's, it's across the street from the multifamily, which has sufficient parking onsite. It also allows this property to retain the landscaping, which, which is consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. So staff has reviewed the three findings for the variance, and with conditions, we have been able to make those findings in the affirmative, and we are recommending approval. With that, I'm happy to answer questions, and Aaron West with the Builders Industry is present.
Okay. Looking at the list of allowed uses within the neighborhood business, it would seem to me that almost any one of those uses would, um, require significant additional parking than the, than the one space that's available onsite.
I agree.
Okay. Okay, any other?
Well, I only, from reading the packet or whatever, it sounded more like that parking lot in the backwards for employees of the post office, and yet, when I was over there yesterday, I saw no on-street parking from route back to this building, and there were trucks, or mail trucks now coming in that back driveway, and the loading docks for the post office are in that backside. So do the semis and that as well, I imagine, come down here to go in and unload?
Sorry, that's my understanding, and you received a correspondence from Mrs. Basher, I believe it was, and she, I actually spoke to her on the phone, and she actually researched on-street parking adjacent to, to post offices, and indicated that the spacing was to accommodate those semis. Now, what the frequency of the semis is, I don't know, because I've been out to the site as well to try to understand the parking demand, and whether or not it's being utilized onsite, which my observation was, it was not being utilized onsite. But to, to contrast it to what you recently looked at with the school and the industrial area, when I went there at various times, I can't think of a single time I didn't go and there was a big truck coming through. Here, I've never seen a large truck, I'm sure they do come, I don't know what hours or what frequency.
I just saw the smaller mail trucks, but my, my, my point is that from that building out to route, there is no one parking on-street now, but they will plan to because of the daycare center, they would be using offloading in front, and parking for the employees. Anyway, I just-
Yeah, I went by there several times over the course of the last two weeks, and I saw one truck that was, belonged to a landscaper, was operating over in the multifamily area. So I, I don't see that there's a lot of, um, demand for park, existing demand for parking along there. There may, this may change that, but, um, but certainly there isn't any, any huge demand at the moment for that parking. Mr. Borders?
Have you contacted the post office?
I have not.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, they, the post office was notified of the hearing as a property owner, but I, I did not formally reach out to the postmaster.
Are there any homeland security requirements around a government facility now? That might affect that street parking?
Patrick Pittinger is here to answer that very question, in case it came up.
Actually, it wasn't about homeland security, I'm not aware of anything related to that, but, um, I will tell you that I, I visited the site as well. Just, you know, the, the area here, the road is, is really quite wide, which is really good for accommodating both the on-street parking that Ms. Sullivan mentioned, but also the turning movements of those trucks. The radius of the curves entering that driveway there, as you can see, it's a big, wide driveway of the post office, and those curves are big, sweeping curves to accommodate those trucks as well. Let's see, the other point, oh yeah, we actually did, actually had a senior planner for transportation, Dirk Goring, actually talked to the post office yesterday and, and asked if they were concerned at all if this were used for other parking, and they, they expressed no concern with that being used. And then finally, we'll have the mic, we are aware that there is a fire hydrant that is just east of the opening of the driveway there to the post office. Now, you don't have to have the curb painted red to be legal to park in front of a, a fire hydrant, if you park in front of that today, you can get a ticket today. However, if we, the Public Works Department feel that it's, it's appropriate, we can paint those curbs red on either side of that driveway to ensure that people stay away from that area to make sure the post office trucks can get in, and we could extend it slightly to the east to make sure it covers the fire hydrant at the same time.
And also, there, I believe there is a stop sign coming out of the post office as well, up on their property, so people aren't just roaring out of that lot, they're, they're actually stopping before they hit the street.
Well, from the configuration of the fence around the property, they have, they have plenty of site distance anyway to, to, to see down both directions, yeah. Are there any other questions for staff at this point? Okay, Mr. Solano?
I'm curious, I was at the site, but I don't remember seeing a sidewalk on the north side of the street. Is there a sidewalk along where the post office property is?
I'm pulling up Google Earth again myself. I was focused on something else when I visited the site as well, but it looks like there is on Google Earth, yes.
Mrs. Basher, who is one of the neighbors, just motioned me that there is, and I put up a picture of the property, and you'll see the sidewalk in front of the subject property, but the neighbor just verified that there is a sidewalk in front of the post office.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, um, the applicant?
Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, for the record, Aaron West with Nevada Builders Alliance, um, I am happy to answer any questions that you may have. I, in the interest of trying to maybe mitigate some of the concerns that have been brought to your attention, I have prepared a supplemental presentation. With your indulgence, it might make more sense to actually take the opposition testimony, and, and that way I can try and speak to some of the concerns that are raised in a follow-up presentation.
Okay, that works.
Thank you.
Okay. So anyone from the public who wishes to address this item, please step forward and state your name to the microphone.
Hi, I'm Linda Basher. So I share 84 feet of fence line with the property on the backside. I am the biggest and longest fence line with, um, Mr. West. My husband couldn't be here today because he works for Corrections. He wakes up at all hours of the day and night to travel. He would have liked to have been here today, and, um, we're a little upset that Mr. West didn't approach us specifically. He wrote me yesterday after Hope Sullivan forwarded my email stating that he didn't have my email. Back at this time last year, he wrote me and my husband with our email, and, um, actually approached my husband over that 84-foot fence line. So I'm really hurt that we could not have worked with him to figure out something that would work advantageously for everybody in the neighborhood. I don't want him to not be successful with his business, I want things to move forward in our community. I have many concerns about this, especially for the hard work my husband and I have put in our backyard. I understand that he keeps making things to be better, but 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM with kids playing and whatnot, and I come from a very large Italian family with five children, where if you put all of us bringing home a kid to play, that puts 10, you know, saying that you're going to do 20 or 36 kids in a backyard, you know, allows me to not enjoy my backyard from Monday through Saturday at any point whatsoever. I've tried to speak with him, I spoke with him on May 10th at 11:45, he gave me his word that he would get back to me, and did not. That's just really sad to me. I, I, I'm really saddened by that. Again, I want him to be able to be advantageous with his business, make money, and be profitable. I have many concerns for parking and what's going to be safe for those children that are going to be playing there, for the- going to be playing there, for their families, et cetera. Our neighborhood has been kind of the thoroughfare for people to bypass Little Lane, to go through our neighborhood, to bypass that light to go through. We have the post office that those big trucks go through, and what he's proposing for people to park and unload those kids could be a danger, and I know that from living there. I just want you guys to just really think about what's going to be going there, and that 36 kids with additional traffic and the noise level for me and my husband living there, and to listen to what all of the neighbors are saying, that please just think about what's going to be better for everybody. I know that two years from now, this could be moot. I know that with my previous experience with the state, that every year, two child cares close, and there might not be childcare there two years from now. It's just plausible. I also know that, as my husband and I talked, I don't want a bar to go in there. I know that there's neighborhoods where homes have been converted into bars. My husband and I talked about this last night, and I definitely don't want to wake up to that being converted into a bar and having them be open till 2:00 or 6:00 o'clock in the morning. I just want something that's going to work, and I wanted to be able to speak with him and just work on something that would work all the way around. That's really all I have to say, and just really consider that, again, there's a rental on one side of him, the post office on the other, and my husband and I share 84 feet of fence line with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
I'm John Price, and I own property at 1215 Ginger Lane. It's the, it intersects with Randell, just about right into my property almost there. I've got concerns with this, that I'm opposed to it. First, to go back to the original permit that was given to it, to have a business in a residential area, I guess, I don't know if that was a mistake or what, but here you do have a business in there, and I guess it was probably low-key with just a few employees, and now you're going to make it worse by adding something that's going to generate a lot of traffic in a pretty quiet neighborhood. What I'm concerned about primarily is the traffic at that one entrance. There's only two entrances to the subdivision, and here you have one right at the busiest intersection there with Rup and Randell. And to have that much traffic in a really, really quiet neighborhood, to me, isn't a compatible land use, and I wish you would deny that use if there is a business to be retained in there, to keep it at the same low-key of traffic that exists in there now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
I'm Tony Kingsland, and I live right across the street in the condos. I've been there 10 years. I own the one on the corner. The landscaping truck is ours. It's very, very, very busy over there. Rup Street is very congested. When you make a right there on Randell, those post office trucks run 24/7. It's very, very loud over there. Bringing that much traffic down that street is not a good decision. The parking there is no good, because on the right side is where most of the people park that live in those condos. So bringing that much more parking and that many more people down that street, horrible. The post office turns in and out right, his house is right there, and those big trucks are 24/7. I just think it's a horrible place to put a daycare. It's noisy, it's busy, and children right there by the post office on that street, my opinion is it's a horrible decision.
Thank you. Next.
For the record, Bob Thrower. I live on 1132 Ginger and Tonka, corner of Ginger and Tonka. Neighbors with those folks, good friends with Tony. As they've all said, we don't want a daycare, that's basically what it is. Nobody in their right mind in this room, especially you folks up there that are making the decision, would want a daycare next to you or in your neighborhood. We moved into the neighborhood knowing that there's a post office and tons of traffic that the post office generates, and the people coming off of Little Lane, off of Rup. I'm on the corner where they jet through there, they don't stop. It's pretty heavy. That's enough on the traffic. Mr. Pittinger says that the parking is adequate enough for what's going to go on there for Mr. West to build that. I know for a fact you need way more parking than you're going to get, and, correct me if I'm wrong, that parking lot inside the post office is not being used for this project. Is that correct? I thought that's what somebody mentioned here just a minute ago.
That is correct.
Correct. All that parking along there, I know from the daycares all over town that they need adequate parking. Is there one daycare in this town, Kinderland, that has street parking similar to this? Well, they're pretty much grandfathered in, no matter what it is. Did my kids go there and it was adequate enough? I don't think this is adequate enough parking. I think it's a big issue, because Carson Lane's, where my wife runs the business there, we needed substantial parking to accommodate the daycare there. And this is inadequate, as far as I'm concerned. What else? The house itself. It can be made back into a house. There is a garage door in there that's boarded off that you cannot see. There are adequate spaces, plumbing, to make those bathrooms into bathrooms to build a house in there. I recommend this property be sold by these folks, get out from underneath it, and make it a home again that our neighborhood deserves. It's a beautiful home, absolutely beautiful home. I went in there the other day and noticed all the ways to convert it back to a home. I was going to make an offer with Andy, but I chose not to. Would I be upside down? Sure. I was told that I can't change the permit to single-family dwelling. I would have to go get that. I couldn't, I'd have to live in it if I was to buy it, which is not for sale. Has Mr. West, I talked to him, and he said, "Make me an offer." I was going to do that, but we decided not to, just via the other two people that possibly have made an offer to buy it too. It can be sold as back as a home, and I think that's where it should go. Absolutely. Because the plumbing's there, they're putting in a dishwasher, they're already doing stuff to make it a daycare already, and this is not even approved. I mean, that's their own prerogative, and that's anybody's prerogative. So if I was to get a permit, if I was to be able to buy it from these folks, would I have to go get a special permit to make it a single-family dwelling?
Why don't you speak in, and we'll do questions.
Okay, good. And then, yeah, I guess that's it. I wanted, we wanted to buy it. I know two other people that wanted to buy it. Shame on them for not getting out underneath it. I know there's a ton of moisture under every single home over there. I think that's a big issue. I'm very sure they got moisture under their home. It's a big issue. I think these guys, two feet, two feet of water under their house? These last storms, I had six inches, my neighbor had six inches. Everybody's pumping it out. Is it the detention pond over in the post office that's settling the water, all the property there, and the detention ponds holding the water, and it's seeping into the soil and coming up underneath our house? Possible. All those houses are flooding over there. Is there a mold issue? I don't know. Are they trying to dry out their facility? Yes, they are. So, enough said, I guess, a little shaky, but it's all good. Thanks for hearing me out, and would definitely like to see it be moved back into a home, which these folks could more than do in a perfect manner, and make it a nice home again for our community.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I was going to try and walk up beside this, but I don't know, I better not. My name is Faith, and I live on Ginger Lane, and I'm here to represent, actually, a lot of people. I've talked to a lot of people around in the area about this, but my main concern that I'm representing is the children that would be located in that building. I just feel bad for them if they're really going to be 20 to 36 children. It's too small of a place. I've been a school teacher for 25 years and a health practitioner, and I know preschools. When I moved up here from California 22 years ago, I worked at a preschool, and we did have problems with parking, and there should have been no problems with parking, because there was, there was parking, not like over here, but the parents would argue, and they would get in there, and they'd come in there, and it was just, it was not good. And so when I saw the letter, it just reminded me, oh no, here's going to be a bad situation, especially with the parking, with the children going in and out. I've been here 22 years, and that parking over there, there's none. I mean, if you say you've got four parking places, there's not, there's just not really that to accommodate. You have to have so many caretakers work there, they're going to have cars, and I believe with probably about, we had five caretakers over on Minnesota Street, and we had to have parking for them, because they were there, you know, full-time, and so you have to have parking. And I've also thought about that water, our, we didn't know it when we moved in, about the, they call it a water table? I just learned about this. And we had this much water under our house, and we figured out through the neighbors and everything what to do. You drain it out, and it's just, it's not good, but I've got some mold up in there that I'm going to have to take care of because of the water being under there. This is just not a good place for children. And if just one child gets out and gets in front of one of those semi-trucks, it's not worth it. It just isn't worth it. And to have the kids, being in the wintertime, they probably wouldn't be able to go outside anyway, so they're going to all be stuck in that, that one room, more than likely, it's probably going to be gutted out, or if it's that. The restroom facilities, when you have that many children, you need at least three or four restrooms. And I believe that we had, I think we had three, and then there was restroom facilities upstairs. So there's a lot of concern, and there's a lot of concern, especially about the parking wintertime. If you've ever been over on Rup and Randell, it is a mess. The snow gets up, then it starts to melt, then it freezes over. You're going to have mothers come in there with their little babies or their preschools children. Am I going on too much? I don't want to keep you if I, have I made a point to where you're satisfied?
I think we, I think we get the gist.
Okay, if you get the gist of it, I'll quit, because I could go on. This really, really is something that really touches my heart with the kids. And I've seen children that have gotten hit by a car. I've seen them run out, fly up in the air, and come down, and it's just not worth it. And that's basically, you know, what I, they are.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to address this item? Okay. So now I will give the applicant an opportunity to address this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, Erin West, CEO of the Nevada Builders Alliance. And while I do appreciate the comments directed at me, you know, as the face of the organization, as the CEO, I would just submit that I work on behalf of a board of directors, a board of directors that actually runs the organization. I have no ownership interest in the organization, in that property. I am just a representative of the organization. We had an opportunity to invest in a new office building. For a little context, we had an opportunity to invest in a new office building, and over at the corner of Division and Williams with three other entities, last year, we pursued that opportunity, remodeled the building, and were able to move, and subsequently moved our corporate office over to Division and Williams. The board has had several conversations about this building and what to do with it going forward. We do own it free and clear. It is a wholly owned asset. And interestingly, we were headed down a certain path, and then it was actually brought to our attention that this resolution of intent existed. That was a very interesting instrument. And I think one of the things that was clear in the resolution was that if we sold the property, per the resolution of intent, if we sold the property, that it would be required to be converted to a residential zoning. We actually contemplated converting it to a residential zoning and still pursuing the daycare, with the idea, the challenge being that there's a provision in the code that if it's in residential zoning, the caretaker, or the owner of the business would actually have to reside on-site. That creates a whole nother set of issues for us. I can appreciate the comments about that it's a home. It certainly was designed to look like a home, and in fact, some of my comments have been, got a little sideways, because I indicated that there are no full restrooms in the building. And so I want to clarify that, obviously, for the purposes of the commercial use, there are two restrooms. They do, they are equipped with toilets and sinks. But for the purposes of residential use, you know, a full restroom would include a shower or a tub. Those do not exist. And while I can appreciate that, is there an opportunity there to convert it to, potentially to a residential use? We went through that exercise, and the reality is, it just does not make financial sense. It would be in the neighborhood of $60,000 to convert that to a house. And while I appreciate Mr. Thrower's comments about, I have access to folks that do that, I would also submit that right now, they are busier than pretty much they've ever been. While I represent them, and they appreciate my time and energy down at the legislature and in various formats, representing their interests, when it comes to things that I need, I'm at their mercy. So, several things have been brought up, and I do, I will apologize to Linda Basher, as I did when I talked to her on the phone. I honestly, we worked very, you know, we worked collaboratively to replace the fence in the backyard, and I do, I do thank her for that. That was something that needed to be addressed, and we got it taken care of. I do not remember having your email at that point, so I apologize for that. Based on what was submitted, that was working with our, you know, our commercial real estate representative and an interested party in the building, that's, kind of went into developing the application that was presented. We proactively went out and distributed letters to all the neighbors prior to them getting the notice from Carson City, with my personal information on it. I gave them my personal cellphone so that they could reach out to me. And I do appreciate Ms. Basher doing that. We had a great conversation, and based on the conversation that we had, started, you know, we started formulating, I went back to our proposed tenant, I had discussions with Hope, and I think we need to clarify that a little bit, but that's really where some of the stipulations, if you will, on the special use permit came about that we presented. But I think, going back to the comments that have been made, I can appreciate folks' concern about the kids and the number of kids and all the other regulations associated with that. There is a very specific department at the There is a very specific department at the state of Nevada under the Department of Health and Human Services that governs daycares. We did not make up that number arbitrarily. We had the inspector from Department of Health and Human Services along with the State Fire Marshal's Office over to the site, walked through the building, and they actually did the calculation in terms of how many kids would be suitable for the property and the number of care providers. So that's kind of, that's where those numbers were derived. And I know that you received a letter citing various NAC and NRS. And I think per, I don't want to belabor the point. I'm happy to speak to every one of those points because unfortunately, there was some information that was taken out of context. And in most cases, every one of the provisions that was provided to you is not applicable. But I sense that we don't really want to get into the legalese as that's governed by another entity. Okay. Obviously, one of the bigger issues is the parking, so let's spend most of our time on that. We, in conversations with planning staff, it was determined that if we were to try and provide onsite parking, that we could provide, we would need to provide four spaces. So essentially, we could tear out the lawn and the trees in the front of the building just, just east of the garage there. And we could put in four parking spaces. But again, going back to the idea that it was, it was really designed to look like a house so that it would, it could fit into the neighborhood, even though functionally it's not there. And so in trying to maintain that, we thought, and I've been, while the building has been there for 16 years, I am the first to attest that I've been with the organization since 2014, now three years in. And I worked there, you know, typically three to four days a week. And knowing the width of that road and the amount of, the amount of traffic or lack thereof on that road and the amount of excess parking, we thought that it would make more sense to maintain the appearance because other than drop off and pickup, with the daycare, you will otherwise not know what is going on inside the building. And I actually have, based on some of the comments and concerns that were raised, I actually have revised exhibit of the street layout. Can I pull up my PowerPoint? So I won't bother you with that, but. So as we discussed, if we were to utilize on-street parking or onsite parking, we would need four spaces besides the handicap. What we've elected, based on the fact that it is a vacant street, is, the idea would be, if this one doesn't want to work, I've got my own, is to utilize that space between the entrance to, as we've discussed, there is the entrance into the post office. To utilize that space between that entrance and Roop, which is 150 feet and actually would accommodate seven cars by parking standards. Again, we would only be required to provide four. We're providing space for up to seven and designating that as employee parking so that there is no child traffic in that area. We don't have kids crossing that entrance into the post office. As was pointed out, there is a fire hydrant. And while I did take that into consideration in my exhibit, I didn't specifically call it out, so I wanted to call out that there is the fire hydrant there at the corner. And that is, and I've indicated that there is sufficient spacing from the fire hydrant along the street to make sure that we meet the NRS with respect to, as Patrick pointed out, not parking in front of that. We do have the parking spaces and the idea of a loading zone was really our own with the idea that we don't want those cars sticking around, right? We wanted to provide a nice, clean entrance exit, stop, drop the kids off and then get on your way. And we actually approached Public Works through Mr. Pittenger and requested, or I guess requested approval, approval? To create, to designate that as an actual loading zone. So the idea would be to delineate that as no parking more than 10, 15 minutes, actually delineate it as loading zone. And then just kind of as a bonus, we have that additional 60 feet there between that and the entrance into the post office so that if we do have some overflow, but again, between that 90 feet, you know, we can put six cars in there, five or six cars. And any traffic involving kids are literally going to be on the north side of the road and they're going to go from there into the building without, you know, being compromised by the entrance into the post office. So I know this appears willy-nilly. There was actually a lot of thought that went into, that went into this. I think I'm going to wait on kind of where we're going with modifications to a, if we were to seek approval, any conditions there. So I did want to provide some context based on the letter that was provided that showed all the other daycares in the community. That was great information. I think one of the things that it highlighted for me is the fact that if you look at, you know, what I did was indicated the location and then the capacity, because a lot of people seemed upset over the number 36, but look at the number of, look at the number of units that have 45, capacity 45, 45, 48, 30, 87, going out to 34 and then 45. And I think as we zoom in on a couple areas, it's pretty interesting. So this is, so this is south Roop, basically just south of Fairview. And right on Roop, which I would submit to you is a much more tenuous traffic situation, there's a daycare with a capacity of 45. And then two streets over, you have a small unit with a capacity of 20. And the other thing that I would ask you to consider when looking at this is every one of these daycares has residential adjacency. And that's really what we're talking about. In terms of the impacts of the special use permit, it comes down to residential adjacency. They have found ways to mitigate that and we have our own proposals for how to mitigate that. And again, looking into the downtown core, you have, you know, 48, 30, 87. And again, in every situation, you have residential adjacency with these daycares. And I would submit to you that over on Division, closer to Williams, is a far less advantageous parking situation. So in just about every one of these instances, you know, drop off, pickup of kids is handled diligently. They're close to neighbors. We can find a way to coexist. So with that, based, and I will say that 100% of this is based on my conversation with Ms. Basher, because I agree with her that they are, you know, they are the most subject to impact from this proposed use. We share that back fence, understanding that the property to the east, you know, they, the residents would probably be concerned, but they weren't notified because they're renters. So, you know, the property owner was notified. I did deliver my letter to them and I didn't hear from them. But in my conversation with Ms. Basher, her primary issue was the enjoyment for her and her husband of their, the continued enjoyment of their backyard. You know, they want to continue to, you know, live in their house uninterrupted and enjoy their backyard as they see fit. And so we had the conversation and I, and again, there were a lot of moving parts with me talking with Hope, with talking with my planning consultant and talking with the real estate folks who represent the tenant to make sure that we got to a point where it all made sense and we were all on the same page. And so I do apologize for the tardiness of getting this to Ms. Basher, but what we submitted, and just to be clear, there's been a lot of concern about the hours of 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And this is, this is a little unique in that the tenant that we are currently working with has relationships to a community, the healthcare community, specifically nurses who work sometimes odd hours. And so they are trying to provide a service to that population. And I would submit that that's a pretty important population in this, in this community. And so the idea of trying to adjust some hours in order to make it more convenient for them is something that we think is important. So based on the concerns that were raised, we would like to maintain the hours of 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. for operation. However, we would be willing to limit the, any outside hours. So basically, any time with the children in the backyard, in the side yard, outside of the building to 8:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. And this was, this was times that I discussed with Ms. Basher in terms of when do they normally use their backyard? And it was, you know, she works until 5:00 o'clock, she gets home, they get situated, they want to enjoy their backyard. So I suggested 5:30 as a cutoff point. Saturday, they enjoy spending most of Saturday, so let's remove that from the hours of operation. We'll cut it back, go Monday to Friday. So I think we're, we are really trying to be good neighbors. We are trying to make concessions. We have tried to really overthink this. The only, the only, I guess, concern that we would have in terms of trying to regulate the count, and as was suggested, we have proposed possibly ramping up the full operation of the facility with the idea that within the first 12 months, we would limit it to 20 children and thereafter, we would be allowed to go to the full 36. And I, and if, and if it's going to require, if it's going to require coming back, and honestly, I'll just say, if it's going to require us filing another special use permit and another $3,000 filing fee, then I would submit to you that I will work internally on, through my lease agreement in terms of the limitations, but I would just assume be approved for the 36. And my premise is this, it's regulated by the state. We didn't dream that number up. The state inspector came out, the fire marshal came out, they're the ones that determine the capacity. We've had the building official over there, we've had everyone through the building, they determined that 36 capacity. You, and so in the interest of me not, I mean, I would give you that we're $7,000 in on filing fees so far, but I would just assume not spend another three. So I would ask that we receive full consideration for the 36 based on the state requirements and I give you my word that we will work through the lease agreement to provide limitations and oversight. And I want you to know that the board of directors takes this very seriously and that the reason that we're here applying for the special use permit, normally you would have the operator up here going for the special use permit. Because we own the building and because we have that, those relationships and because we have that history in the neighborhood, we thought that it was important that we be the holder of that special use permit so that we can actually impose above and beyond whatever requirements you put on us and limitations you put on us. We can go over and above that in our lease agreement with our tenant. So we want, we want a stake in the game. We, you know, we want that, that direct connection. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Sadler.
Could you bring up the parking or whatever, that picture with the parking on it? Just curious, I was in there again this morning, coming down Roop, I turned in on the way here. And to get to your loading zone, you're either going to have to make a right and go around the block or do like I did and do a U-turn in that intersection. What is the plan there? So you're going to have to drive through the neighborhood to the right and back down and around to come up facing back to Roop or go back by your area and turn around somewhere to come back?
I'll just, I'll just tell you, I mean, I think the U-turn will be, will be a likely maneuver there and it's.
It worked quite well, but I'm.
Well, not only did it work well, it's perfectly, it's a perfectly legal maneuver here.
Okay, to go into that parcel turn area and just loop around?
Well, not even go into the parcel, just to make, to make a U-turn, you know, in that, frankly, in the road or you can go in that intersection, T-intersection, there's a lot of basketball.
That's perfectly legal?
Perfectly legal.
Oh, okay. I was just curious. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Solano.
I think there are several problems with the use of the building for this many kids. How will the garage be used? Will that be used for the kids?
For the record, Aaron West, and I'm sorry, I should have clarified that. Some years ago, before I got there, I want to say it was six to seven years ago, the garage was actually converted to office space. So the door, yeah, the door was left in place for appearance. The tracks were actually, the overhead tracks were actually removed and then there was a secondary wall built about three feet behind the garage door in order to create kind of a dead storage space. And then the rest of the garage has already been converted to usable.
Yeah. One of the concerns I would have would be that if there were perhaps, if it was perhaps used for a napping or sleeping area, the hot water heater and the FAU are in that space. And I can tell you that throughout the nation, there have been hundreds of people who have died in garages, sleeping in garages. So I would be very concerned about that. Now, that's not a matter that's up to this planning commission to determine, but that would be one concern, you know, that I would have as well as the parking and, you know, and other things.
And if I may speak to that.
Sure.
Again, for the record, Aaron West, we did have a conversation with the state inspector and the more likely use for napping would actually be the large conference room that's on the north side of the building. That would be governed and restricted by them as well to address your concern.
Mr. Sadler.
Was any consideration or discussion with the neighbors, possible mitigation with the, maybe if you're going to put 20 or 36 kids against my backyard, I'm going to have a major problem. But it may be a taller wall or something like that, or would that limit views or was any discussion of that brought up or?
For the record, Aaron West, honestly, once we heard the concerns from Ms. Basher, it really became an element of removing the kids from that equation so that when they are home and utilizing their backyard, the kids would not be present.
But I thought I picked up from Ms. Basher that maybe your husband does shift work or that sometimes he's sleeping during the day or if you would maybe?
My husband does extraditions. He trains new recruits and he travels quite a bit. I did share this with Aaron when him and I spoke because one of the things that he did state to me was that we were difficult to get a hold of. And so I shared with him that my husband travels a lot. As a matter of fact, that's why he's not here today. And so he works for the transportation division in NCC.
I just wanted to make sure he's not like doing graveyard or switching the swings or anything like that much?
It varies. So he does extraditions throughout the U.S. And so his shifts can vary. This morning, he was up at 3:00 a.m. So he can be gone, and I did share this with Aaron, he can be gone and sometimes he'll be gone for three days at a time and my dogs and I are quite happy to have the bed to ourselves. So, and I did share that with Aaron. I said there are occasion that his hours fluctuate and the same for my job as well. Now, I will say I'm not gone, but my shifts will vary, but not extreme like my husband's.
But the 5:30 and lack of Saturdays is a pretty good resolution for you?
Yes, Saturdays were just something I just was not willing to give up in my home period at all. I did share with Aaron that I just would really like to be able to be out, especially in the summer, you know, to be able to be outside and enjoy my Saturdays was one thing that Aaron and I did agree upon, that please don't take my Saturdays away. We've done extensive work and Aaron does know, especially when the fence went down, we've done all the sweat equity in our backyard and have done extensive work back there.
And would you possibly foresee a taller fence or whatever helping you or just blocking views, maybe leave it the way it is? I was just curious.
I will say, when we redid the fence and my husband, Mike, and I spoke this morning, the new fence that went up, the 84 or 86 feet, I have it written down here, is taller. It went to a six-foot fence and the new fence that we did just put up with Aaron, and so it is taller. Aaron did offer to. Aaron did offer to plant additional trees or shrubbery or et cetera if that became an issue down the road. Mike and I discussed if we had to, I felt defeated last night, I will honestly tell you, after the email that was sent to me by Aaron yesterday, it just came down to this is happening. I spoke to the state licensing division yesterday. The NRS is that I submitted to Hope, the ones with the bathroom are institutional. He has complied with that. So I also know that, that you are suggesting to them putting in additional bathrooms for the kids. So I did try to put at ease with some of the neighbors that that is something that Aaron is considering for that, for the children. I also know that one of the things that the neighbors don't know, because I do live on the other side and the fence was down, that home is not traditional bedrooms, et cetera, that is open space. I tried to relieve some of the neighbors that I've spoke to. So it is an open space. It's not bedrooms with divided things. I knew that the garage is an open space, it's been converted. You know, I was a single mom at one point, so I, I know that space can be utilized to be a daycare. My concern is not so much, you know, 12 kids, it's 36 kids hooting and hollering in my backyard and toys flying over. That's my concern. So as far as the space being utilized for that, that was one thing that I didn't address with NRSs or NACs was how much square footage was going to be used. So, but as far as, you know, putting up additional, my husband and I just did discuss that, that we would readdress that with Aaron, that if over time, because we knew this was moving forward, because I have been talking with state licensing, could we go higher or plant something to give us, give us privacy?
And it has a rather large covered patio attached to the house as well, which is where in the, I imagine a lot of the, when it's hot out, they'll be more towards that.
Right, which is also in compliance with the state. I, I did review that. I'm, I'm a resourceful person and if I remember correctly, the covered patio is...
We're not discussing state regulations, so...
Sure, but he is in compliance with that. It's the same square footage as his garage space.
It'll have to be, so...
Yep, he's, he's done his work, I will tell you that.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for coming back.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. Any question, any other questions for the applicant?
I have a question. I'll have my turn next.
Now, the public, I'm gonna close the public hearing portion of this.
Is the public...
It's, it's...
There was just something I wanted, it's very, very important.
You had your opportunity to speak.
I'll cut it off and it's, I'm telling you, it's very important to children.
You can have one minute.
One minute, that's all it's taking. Do you want me to go up there or just stay here?
Do you have to come up to the microphone? She's gonna win.
I didn't realize this was, didn't realize this was Aaron. I spoke to him on the phone when this letter first came out and I mentioned this to him, this is a high sex crime area. Within a mile, there are 18. And I just thought, that's not, and I wasn't gonna mention it, but that's what I thought, oh. But when I realized just now that this was Aaron, I knew that he knew that.
I'm a part of public safety.
And I just went on the internet last night and that's how I came up with the 18 within a mile. And I don't know how many are right. They gave some addresses on Ginger Lane, but that's, wanted to bring that up and, and there was other people in the neighborhood.
But that is, that's a licensing issue and it's not something that we are gonna consider.
This is only on moral issues. This is...
We don't consider moral issues either, thank you.
No, I understand.
We're discussing land use issues.
Right, I understand that. And, and if they, if they go ahead and put...
And you have your one minute is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing portion of this consideration and bring it back to the commission for discussion and action. So we have three items. The first is a zone change item. And this is the one I had the most trouble with and, and I sympathize with Hope and, you know, this, this resolution that put this into place is just baffling to me, but it seems to me that the intent of the, of the, that resolution was that this would revert to residential use if the, if there were a change. And I, I concern from the, you know, looking at the neighborhood, I under, I completely understand why that was, why that was put in there. I do have a question for, for Hope though, on the, the zoning for the multifamily portion. It said NBP. What is NBP?
The P is the prefix for planned unit development. So it's basically the base zoning's neighborhood business and then if, if you think traditionally, the overlay is planned unit development.
That was, that was developed separately from the other residential, the MH6 area.
Correct. It was.
Do you want to tell them? I don't know. Yeah, but no, it's not true. MH6 is because of public... I did not research the evolution of, of that development, but the MH6 is not a P and the, the neighborhood business is planned unit development.
Okay. And the MH6 would allow, allow a single-family residential, it does, isn't restricted to manufactured housing?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so we have, we have the zone change, we have the zone change. So we're, we're considering whether we should make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to, to revoke the resolution of intent, which created the requirement that on reversion to a, another use besides the office for bond, that it be revert to MH6. And I guess the question is, is that appropriate or is it appropriate to maintain it as neighborhood Which it currently is. And as a neighborhood business, it would allow for, well, no, the daycare only by special use permit.
Special use, right.
But it would allow for in any number of other types of uses within that, within that zoning designation.
Including, yes, a single-family resident.
So that, that is the issue is...
So is it necessary? We want to do it to get rid of the resolution?
Right. Because the resolution says that they have to revert to MH6 if they were to change.
Right. It could be used for professional offices, for instance, without any problem. Isn't that correct?
The resolution of intent is awkward, to be kind. What it says is that it was very specific to the applicant at that time, so it didn't say an office use. That, that would have been a little more normal, I guess, because if we had a, if we had a planned unit development, I'm just gonna keep comparing it to a planned unit development. What's a planned unit development? You start with your base zoning and you have the ability to lessen that list of allowed uses. So in this case, they could have used, they, they used the resolution of intent not just to lessen the allowed uses and to say this can only be an office use. They went above and beyond that and said this could only be an office use for this particular entity. And so that's why I think I probably, the word I think I just used was awkward, it, it's awkward. And so they're saying, well, we, we've relocated our offices, but we don't want to sell our property, so we would like to eliminate this resolution of intent. The default on that is we're neighborhood business with the scope of uses allowed in neighborhood business. So I think what the chair is saying is, well, let's look at the scope and, and see how it fits in with the findings. Does that make sense?
Yes. But it still almost makes more sense to put it back to a residential because that's where it's sitting in.
Mr. Board.
This, this resolution, like, like Hope said, is awkward, but almost everything that's in the resolution is specific to that building, which has been accomplished, except the fact that they can't sell it. But it has been a neighborhood business. It would seem to me that if you remove this awkward piece of legislation that was written a long time ago, it still becomes a neighborhood business. And we, and, and that's probably where it ought to start, as opposed to taking it all the way back to MH6. Because that way, it, it, even though it looks like a house, it's constructed like a home office. And as, as a user of home offices, this would be a nice place for me if I was ever gonna do that again. And I think that's probably the highest and best use of that piece of property where it sits, is some sort of home office development. It also, I noted in the requirements, it says you can't park in the residential area. Now, certainly down the street is not in the residential area, but it's in the neighborhood. So it, it would seem to me that this, this is more simple than the other two. I agree with...
Well, I'm just, I'm just, well, it's, I'm just trying to ascertain the original intent of the, of the resolution to, to figure out, is it, is it appropriate to make a modification to it? Is it, is it appropriate to make this particular modification?
I would say that the original intent was to convert it back to residential, but the question is whether or not that makes sense anymore.
Well, I'm actually reading it and I'm, I don't get that sense.
Okay.
And, I mean, I, I, I mean, I, I am actually in favor of, of making, making the recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. I just want to have it on the record that we have considered all of the, the possibilities here. And I think that, you know, that there was, there had to have been a reason why they did this in the beginning. And even though it's not clearly stated why they did it, and it is somewhat awkward to have this little bump out of, of a residential district on that side of the street. I agree that it's, that it was used for an office building, it was, it is what a use that would be permitted in neighborhood business and I'm actually okay with reverting to that.
Was, was that there before, when, when did the post office go in? I can't remember. Were you there originally before the post office, do you know?
I wish I could answer that question.
I can't remember when that was, I was here, but I can't...
I know, I know that our building was constructed in 2001. And I, so I think, yeah, I believe the post office was there at that time.
Mr. Salerno.
I don't think it's reasonable to simply meet the needs of the existing adjacent residents. They may move or they may want to move and somebody else might want to come into that residential area and have peace and quiet in their backyard during other times. It isn't, it isn't right for us, I believe, to use that. I think we have to look at the zoning and not who currently lives there next door to the project. That along with the parking. I'm, I try to visualize 20 cars because you see the cars will arrive at about the same time. They will arrive 6, 7, 8 o'clock, probably at the latest in the morning. And we've got all those cars coming at the same time. If they were staggered throughout the day, but that isn't what you can expect with a daycare facility. People are gonna drop their kids off before they go to work. And the same will occur when they return back from work. They're gonna pick them up at approximately the same time. And there is not adequate street parking or onsite parking for that purpose and I have a big problem with that. So I, I just simply can't go along with the resolution.
Well, I would like to, I'd like to point out a situation where the parking, this is very similar to the parking situation at St. Teresa School on Fifth, West Fifth Street, where there is plenty of on-street parking, which is utilized exactly as you say. It doesn't, it causes a slowdown, it's a school district, everybody slows down anyway. I pers, I think that, you know, that this is less of an impact on, on the, on the, on the street than, than, than an actual school would be because there are actually people parking there all day long at St. Teresa's. There won't be, other than the employees, there won't be people parking all day long here.
Well, are we discussing, are we discussing all three of these or are we gonna address one at a time?
Well, we're discussing all three of them.
Okay. Because while we're there, if you go, I'll make comment now then, under the special use permit findings, I'm gonna have a whole lot of hard time meeting number two, which is detrimental peaceful enjoyment of the surrounding area. I've got a whole big problem there. If you're putting 20 to 36 kids in my backyard or right against my backyard, I've got a problem.
Well, I'm gonna...
Anyway, that's, if we're making points on all three, I would still wait till we got there.
Which brings it back to, to my concern about the zoning change, that if we, if we recommend approval of the zoning change, then you're opening the door to all kinds of other allowed uses that could have the same impact, but we would have no say over because they are not conditional uses. So, you know, if, if you, you can't, I don't, I don't think that you can say, well, let's approve that, let's make a recommendation that they change the zoning and then say, well, the conditional use isn't, isn't appropriate because of whatever.
That's why I was just asking that, if we're gonna do them individually or take them all together, so, anyway.
Well, I think we, we have to vote on them altogether, but I think that the considerations are, or we have to vote on them separately, but the considerations are sort of intermingled, that you've got, you know, the zone change and then you've got the special use permit, which, you know, is the special use permit really, can we, can we approve the special use permit without the variance because the variance requires the parking or eliminates the parking requirement? I don't know.
Mr. Chair, if I may? I gave a very brief presentation and I think Commissioner Salerno brought up some good points and if I could just take a minute to explain the staff's thinking. The staff report was not based on any input from Mrs. Basher. The staff's report was based on a generic analysis of the findings, recognizing there were residential uses on two sides, single-family residential. So it wasn't specific to any neighbor, it was general in nature. When the applicant first sat down with staff to discuss this, we immediately flagged the potential conflict with residence, with residential uses next door and the applicant volunteered a limitation on outdoor use. At that time, the volunteer hours were 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Staff included that in our conditions of approval, not because of any specific input from any specific neighbor, but in an attempt to address finding number two. Additionally, staff looked at the parking and I was concerned about shift changes. The parking demand is a derivative of the number of employees and my concern was during a shift change, you would double the demand for parking. The applicant explained to me that the arrival time of the children is actually staggered. So you have, I'm using the word handful, it's probably not a good word, but a handful of children who arrive at 6:00 AM and then throughout the morning, more children come, so your staffing ramps up later. You have, you have a smaller staff at the start of the day, then as more children arrive, you have more staffing. And so staffing's turned over as the demand for the facility is changing and you could think of it as almost a bell curve where you start low, go high, go low. And so I don't, I, I heard the comment that the children all arrive at the same time. That's, that's not the case and more importantly, the staffing doesn't have a shift change at a given time, it's also staggered. And with that, I will listen.
Yeah, but, but Hope, you don't know that for sure.
That is the practice for daycare.
I understand the practice, but if, if you create a new daycare's facility and all 20 people go... all 20 people go to work at 6:00, they're all going to be there at, at 5:30 or 6:00. And if, and if a month later, they all go to work at 9:00, then you're going to have a shift. So, to say that it, it's, you can put it on a bell-shaped curve, I don't think you can. It's a question of, of the work hours of the users of the facility, and, and that's an unknown.
Mr. Chairman.
That's a fair point, and the, the last thing, and you just reminded me of one other staff, staff recommendation, that did not come from the applicant, and did not come from Mrs. Brasher or any specific neighbor, was the number 20. The staff met with the applicant and let the applicant know 36 felt like a big number. And for an 8,700 square foot lot with single-family residents on two sides, not specific to who those residents are, just in general, and that staff would be comfortable with starting at 20. And once it was in operation, if, if the concerned staff was worried about, weren't realized, it would make sense at some later date for the applicant to come forward and say, look how responsible we are, we're not causing any problems, we'd like to have more children, and the commission could consider it at that time. But given the size of the buildings, the size of the log, the locational situation, the staff recommended 20 in response to finding number two. Thank you.
Mr. Pittinger.
I just want to put in my two cents, in my role as the Transportation Manager of the Public Works Department, I've had this job for over a decade, and I've dealt with a lot of, we'll call them compatibility issues between commercial residential uses. And they've been everything from dentist office to schools to nursing homes, and daycare centers, frankly. And, and you do have people that call and say, you know, I don't like the, say, the dentist office, the dental employees and the people, people that are coming to the dentist office, stay there for a period of time, unlike with a daycare center. And, and frankly, I'm the one out there, you know, for lack of a better term, officiating these disputes. You know, we had a guy, I'm not going to mention it, but there was a law firm that somebody parked their car in front of a neighbor's house, and the neighbor decided to actually turn a sprinkler at the director of the law firm. That's a bad idea. Don't, don't do it to a lawyer. You know, so things like this happen, but, but I can tell you that, you know, daycare centers are not the, are not the big concern. Those are not the ones that I deal with predominantly. But, but if there, if there are needs, you know, sometimes people call and say, you know, could you put a sign above this type or paint a curve like this? We do do that, and we do work with people, and we're prepared to continue to do so as necessary.
Mr. Sattler.
I appreciate that, but back to the number, state saying 36 is, is fine, we're saying, 13 says 20, but the best the applicant has offered, and he mentioned is, if we give him 20, and if he has to come back and put in another application to increase that, you, you know, it's a cost to them. Is that, if he came back to us to request an increase, is there another fee charged at that time?
There is, but it's not a full fee, it's 75% of the fee, because it would be a revision to the existing special use permit. I also recommended 20, knowing that the applicant wouldn't start with 36 on day one. The intent was to start with 12 and to ramp up, if you will. And so 20 seemed like a reasonable number to give them a chance to get established, to have a productive business, while not overwhelming a resident, an adjacent residential area.
But the special recommended condition states 20 like it's going to stay 20, because then another, I'm, and knowing business, another 16 would be a lot more income, obviously, than 20. I mean, it's almost double.
Correct, staff's recommendation is 20.
Is he accepting?
You've read the conditions, and you're, you're agreeable to those. I understand that, that you would prefer the 36, but, but you will, you will be agreeable to the 20.
Now that I know it's only 75% of the $3,000, you know. I think, I think that the challenge for us becomes trying to negotiate a long-term lease with a tenant, with, with a hard stipulation that unfortunately just doesn't make sense from a state regulatory perspective, but I understand you guys are trying to get your head around this. I, I would submit that, you know, as Patrick pointed out, I, I showed you guys 10 other daycares that are adjacent to residential that are.
The question was, would you agree to the conditions?
I'll respectfully abstain.
If, Mr. Chairman, to try and put another spin on this whole thing, I know you are. If, if we in fact approved the zoning change to leave it as neighborhood business, that, and, and turn down the other two, the property owner still has the option to find another neighborhood business. And while some of them are not subject to a special use permit, many of them are. And it would seem to me that the most egregious of those to the neighborhood would be, would require a special use permit, and probably a parking variance. So, you know, I'm, I'm not, I'm not overly unconvinced about leaving number, or changing number one, or approving the, the first item. I think it, depending on what the other two, how the other two turn out, you haven't, we haven't overly restricted the property owner by doing that. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you for that. And I, I would agree, I think that, you know, if, if you were to approve the neighborhood business designation, or make a recommendation of making that change, then the property owner has a multitude of, of options. So, then the question is, then, under the special use permit, is this inappropriate? Is, is, does he meet the conditions for a special use permit? Does he, can the findings be made for issuance of special use permit? If they can, then absent a persuasive negative argument, or negative finding, then we have to approve the special use permit. And then the question is, is the variance appropriate? Can we make the findings for the variance? And that, to me, is, is one of the harder ones, but.
Well, but that, that goes back to, you know, if, if you can't make the findings for the special use permit under Article II or whatever, but you have removed the requirement to, to go back to single-family residents, at least the property owner has an option still.
And then we throw the caveat into these abstaining from accepting all the conditions, due to the number of children that he wants to be able to have there.
Okay, well, I think we've beat the discussion to death. So, the, we will consider each one of these separately. The first one is the zoning map amendment, which is to remove the resolution of intent on the property's own neighborhood business. Does anyone want to make a motion to that effect?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of ZMA 17049, a zoning map amendment to remove a resolution of intent on property's own neighborhood business, located at 806 Randall Drive, APM 009-072-01, based on the findings contained in the staff report.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the item? I just, I'm going to state again that, that my concern is, is I really wish I knew the background for why this was put in place in the first place, what the discussion was at that supervisors' meeting, or planning commission meeting, and why they, why they did this.
They can still sort it out, it's going to them.
Right, they, they, they can. But anyway, so that, that's my, my two cents, and I will call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes and one no. Okay, moving on, we have to consider whether a special use permit to allow a childcare facility on the property meets the conditions and finding, required findings of the Carson City Code. I hear a motion.
I still have the question on number two, and, and the fact that the applicant is not willing to accept the 20 that we're recommending, I don't feel at this point I can make a motion. Would be more.
You could vote against the motion, or somebody could make a motion.
Chair, can I clarify?
I make a motion to deny SUP 17-050, a special use permit to allow a childcare facility on property's own neighborhood business, and located at 806 Randall Drive, APM 009-023-01, based on the findings contained in the staff report, and subject to the condition, well, and, and not be, conditions of approval, I feel it, it does not meet those requirements. I think that it's an appropriate, inappropriate use on this particular property, and those are the reasons for my motion.
I, I would like to have a little bit more specific reason for.
Can I clarify possibly that by the fact that it may, it has difficulty meeting special permit finding number two? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, well, I would, it may have, how is it, how is it difficult in meeting that?
As far as what it's going.
Yeah, how, how does it not meet? You can't just say, it doesn't meet it. You have to give specifics to how, how it doesn't meet.
It will change the peaceful enjoyment, et cetera, of surrounding neighbors in the neighborhood.
Because of the size of the parcel and the, the parking, the lack of parking, we can't use.
Parking is number three.
Okay, number three, yeah.
Well, I guess we'll have to go with that.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask the commission, and I'm sorry to belabor this, is, is there a mitigation that could be put into place that would cause you to be able to make the finding?
In my case, it would be with the recommending acceptance of what staff recommend as far as the number of children.
Well, he doesn't get the permit unless he agrees to the conditions, and the condition says 20.
Could I just clarify something, Chair? Could I just clarify something, please? I, in that I'm asking for 36, and in that I'm suggesting that I would probably come back next year and ask for 36, I just felt it was disingenuous for me to say that I'm okay with 20.
I understand, I understand, I understand.
So, if, if it's in the, it's in the conditions, and if you adopt it with those conditions, then it is what it is.
And that's what it is.
Okay, that's, that's what I was trying to clarify. That's where my difficulty was.
But we have a motion to deny, based on Mr. Salerno's motion, and the question to Mr. Salerno is, is your concern just the use itself, or is it the number of, of children at the facility?
It's the use itself.
So, we have a, a motion to deny, do we have a second for, did we have a second?
So, there's, it's for the rec, can somebody, can you rescind that motion and restate it? There's been too much on the initial motion.
Okay. Would you rescind that motion?
Yes.
Okay, and we didn't have a second, so it really wasn't a motion anyway, but, but we have, so, would you like to restate your motion? And it could be the same one, but just because the discussion was so convoluted about that, that we'd like to have it restated.
Okay.
It could be based on that discussion that you just had, I think that might.
I move to deny SUP-17-050, a special use permit to allow a childcare facility on property-zoned neighborhood business, and located at 806 Randall Drive, APM 009-072-01, because it does not meet the findings required for this use at this location.
Specifically, how does it not meet the findings? How specifically does it not meet the findings?
How specifically?
Yeah.
Because of the, the fact that the adjacent properties, residential properties would suffer from this use.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Motion fails for lack of a second. Do we have another motion? Would somebody care to make another motion?
No.
Mr. Sattler, you indicated that you were.
Let's try the other side. Okay, I move to approve SUP-17-050, a special use permit to allow a childcare facility on property's own neighborhood business, and located at 806 Randall Drive, APM 009-072-01, based on the findings contained in the staff report, and subject to the conditions of approval.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Well, I guess I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Mr. Chair, if I may point out, condition number four, 14, states the outdoor areas may only be utilized from 8:00 AM to 5:30 PM. The applicant did volunteer changing that to 5:30 PM. Is that, which hour do you want to include in the motion?
5:30.
Okay, thank you.
Is the no Saturday here as well?
I'm checking.
That.
Okay, and there will be no Saturday operation.
That was the other, correct? Yeah.
Thank you.
And there will be no Saturday operation.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, with some modifications to the, or some clarification on the conditions of approval. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 No.
No.
So, we have two yea and two nay, motion fails.
Oh, you voted no?
No, I voted yes. Boarder and Salerno. Motion fails. So, we don't need to move forward with the variance, because the motion has failed.
You know, I think just for clarity on the record, Mr. Chair, I would prefer a vote on the variance item as well.
We will entertain a motion on the, on a variance to allow a reduction in the number of park, onsite parking spaces.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to deny variance number 17-054, variance to allow for reduction in the number of onsite parking spaces, from four to one, based on the, from four to one, because of special permit finding number three. Or it's a variance just because.
The variance has findings. It's not a special use permit, a variance, a variance.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would, I would suggest that it fails to meet the requirement, or that a finding could be made that it doesn't meet requirement number one for-
Yeah.
-for variance.
Okay.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to deny a variance. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. No opposed, and two abstention and one vacant. So the, the variance is denied. You, the, you have an opportunity to appeal this decision to the Board of Supervisors. You should contact the Community Development Department to determine the requirements for that appeal. Thank you for your time. Thank you all for your time and input.
You're doing fine, just a second.
We're not done yet. Okay. Item F6, ZCA-17-024, for possible action. To make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors regarding a zone change amendment to amend Title 18, Chapter 18.6, Development Standards, Division 1, Land Use and Site Design, Section 1.17, Multifamily Apartment Development Standards, and Section 1.18, Non-Residential Districts, to clarify that single-family residential development and two-family residential development may meet the open space requirements by providing either common open space or private open space. Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You all may be thinking you've seen this before, and you sort of have. Section 1.17 of our development standards identifies development standards for the multifamily apartment zoning district, and says that there has to be a combination, a certain amount of land allocated for common open space, and a certain amount can be met through private. Similarly, residential development in non-residential zones includes parallel language that says you have to provide for common open space. When I initially brought an amendment to you, what I said was, single-family and duplexes have to have a minimum of 6,000 square foot lot sizes, and so they'd have backyards, so we should eliminate them from the regulations. What I failed to recognize when I brought that to you was townhouse development is considered single-family residential. So what is before you today is not an elimination of the requirement for single-family and duplex, but rather wording that says, "In the case of single-family or duplex, in the multifamily apartment zoning or in a non-residential zone, you may meet the required open space requirement either through common open space or private open space." And that is the proposed amendment, and hopefully we got it right, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? I think it's pretty clear what the intent is here. Okay, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of ZCA-17-024, an ordinance amending Title 18, Chapter 18.16, Development Standards, Division 1, Land Use and Site Design, Section 1.17, Multifamily Apartment Development Standards, and Section 1.18, Residential Development Standards in Non-Residential Districts, to clarify that a single-family residential and two-family dwelling may comply with open space requirements either through common or private open space and providing other matters properly relating thereto.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Mr. Salerno. We have a motion by Mr. Sattler, seconded by Mr. Salerno. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four ayes, no nays, and two abstentions, or two absent.
Get the ball back, motion.
Okay. Moving on. Who is it? I lost mine. Oh, there's. Okay. Item G. That closes the public hearing portion of this meeting. Moving on to item G, staff reports.
Just, just briefly, just a reminder that you have your regular planning commission meeting next Wednesday, May 31st, starting at 5:00 PM. We'll be considering about a few, a few more items that were submitted for this month, including growth management. We should have, be prepared to pick up your packets. If, if not by the end of the day today, certainly, certainly tomorrow morning, so you can start reading next, next week's agenda items. That's all I have.
Thanks for coming today.
Okay, any commissioners?
One, one question.
Okay.
It was implied or talked about, I think, in the paper or somewhere, that the only way that the Board of Supervisors would reconsider extending the moratorium on the recreational marijuana if they got, if it came from us.
Well, you should leave some comment about coming to you.
Yeah, yeah. Do, do we want to consider that or not? I guess that's the question.
I would like to.
I'll give a, I can give, let me give an update on it then, where we, because we went, you watched the Board of Supervisors meeting. So like with, like with medical marijuana that was approved by the legislature two years ago, now we're dealing with the recreational side of it. So our, from the zoning side, our plan all along has been to follow that same process and get direction from the policymakers first as to whether or not we want to allow it, what limitations. So we, we're taking it to the board to get direction before bringing the zoning ordinance to you to decide. If, if, if the direction is we're going to regulate it through business licenses or whatever, then, then we'll bring it to you for the zoning side of things. And I, and I think either way, there'll be a zoning amendment coming, coming to you on that. Not sure of the timing on that now. It will be, it'll be, probably be a couple of months at least before it comes to you because our, our direction was to get some more community input on it before coming to you. So we need to set up some meetings from that, so it's probably not till, I think maybe the July meeting might be the first time that you, you'd see something to, to discuss that. So, does it, any, any more questions about that? Okay.
Any move, I just, any move, anything on the Montessori? What happened with that? Did they go to the board or anything?
Montessori school has, has appealed. I have not had a chance to schedule that because you guys are keeping me busy.
Any word on a replacement commissioner or commissioners?
Yeah, I think with the recruitment, if it's not open right now, will, it will be open, and not having the, who is-
There was one that-
Who's is up? Mon, mon, so we have a vacancy, and Monica, Monica's is up, and she doesn't plan on resubmit. So there's going to be, this is for public information and you, if you know anybody. So there should be two spots available that are, that will be vacant. Not sure if anybody else is-
They had open waltz back when he first put his letter in. I know I saw something in the paper back in April, I thought that that was a-
Well, I think they just held off to do interviews one time instead of doing them to fill his, and then the next month to do more. So they'll, they'll interview together.
Okay.
Yeah, so anybody interested in planning commission, check online or the executive offices for more information.
Okay, thank you. Any commissioners have any comments? Okay, hearing none during the meeting.